Mike O'Nair with O'Nair Project Management. I'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to go ahead and do just a little background and brief history on kind of how we got to where we are today, particularly for the council, the new members of the council who may not have an understanding or appreciation of the events that led up to bringing Populous under contract to look at the Civic Center development. Just some facts about the Civic Center complex itself. It was built between 1963 and 1964 and was dedicated on September 18th to the 20th, 1964. And it was a, so about 58-year-old facility. The Expo Hall was built later in 1973, and the surface parking on the site is 1,250 spaces. The auditorium seating you see there, total is 10,620, and the theater seating 1,950. One of the things that, thanks to Elizabeth Stevens for sending one of the old documents from the Civic Center is, you know, this was a state-of-the-art facility when it was built in 1964. It had the latest and greatest at its era. There had been very few upgrades over the time, and it no longer meets the requirements that we need for requirements such as American With Disabilities Act, et cetera. And more importantly, it doesn't really meet the needs of the entertainers and the public that expect the type of facility. So that was kind of the problem set that the city's been facing for many years. Back in 2007 and 2008, the city commissioned some groups to look at a new plan for Mobile. And as you see from the rendering there on the screen, this was the cover of the plan in 2008. It showed the Civic Center site, and you can see it shows a lot of things on the parking lot, and it shows a lot of housing and other buildings on the site. So there's been a vision for things happening on this site and what happens here for well over 15 years and even longer than that. Inside that document, there's two pages dedicated to talking about the Civic Center and what might be done and what the process that the city should look at to undertake redevelopment of the Civic Center and Civic Center site. It talks about maintaining these facilities and renovating, and it talks about eliminating these facilities and doing a complete new development. Of note, you'll see that the cost estimate in 2008 to renovate these facilities was $40 million, at least from the study then that was done. And so, as a general rule of thumb, construction costs generally double about every 10 years. And so if you extrapolate that number out, you know, you'll start to get close to where some numbers are for construction today. There's been multiple concepts and studies over the years. These are ones from, again, 2008 and later that look at different things. And the point of this is to say, there's some common themes that have come up over the decades of looking at this. Some of those themes include a higher and better use for the surface parking, some mixed-use development for office, residential, commercial, and entertainment. Bottom line is something that would generate revenue more than just a big paved parking lot. And the concepts that have been done in the past have looked at keeping and removing the arena, theater, and Expo Hall. So we've got a variety of concepts that the city has looked at over the years. In 2017, the city commissioned a facilities assessment of these facilities and looked at the condition then, and then developed a strategic plan for the facilities in January 2018. And in September, they issued through a contractor an RFP to look at some concepts for this site. And in July of 2019, the council was presented those proposals, which the two images you see on the screen are two of those proposals. And the city was in the throes of looking at those, and of course, then the pandemic hit not long after that, some hurricanes and the pandemic, and that slowed everything down for everyone, the city, for the developers, for everyone. And it also made us reassess the facility itself in that, you know, with COVID, you know, this was a highly-used facility, the arena and the Expo Hall for doing testing and vaccinations and the like. And candidly, you know, funding for the single development also proved to be a challenge. So having a single developer come in and say they're going to invest and do the entire thing also looked to be a challenge as well. And some of the feedback we'd gotten or heard from the community was that there's still a pretty strong interest, and our architects will talk about that, about maintaining some of these facilities. So it was during the pandemic period that the city looked at, because doing an entire site complex and taking everything down and turning it over to a single developer may not be the best course of action, how could we do this in a phased approach and do it in such pieces that we could develop the site and meet kind of those goals that I showed you from 2007, 2008, but do it in a more cost-effective manner in a way which the city could absorb it and developers could absorb it and do it in pieces? So in doing that, we think that you could set conditions for other private investment on the site, whether it's in a whole or in pieces. But one of the first steps we need to look at is, we did not have a good cost assessment to renovate these facilities, and are they even, is it even something we want to do? And if so, what would that look like? And so that's what led us to seeking out Populous to come give us an updated vision and cost for these, to renovate these facilities and make sure that they're viable to do that. And so that's been the task and purpose. And today, that's what Populous is going to present, is their proposals and concepts on just these facilities. This is not for the entire site. They're going to show some images that kind of are consistent with the previous studies that were done about showing other things in the parking lot, but their focus is on these three buildings. So I just want to make sure that that's clear for the council, that anything else in the rest of the site, there's going to be future discussions and debate about that. There's actually some upcoming meetings in the planning commission here coming up this week to talk about zoning for the remainder of the site as well. But today's focus is strictly on these three buildings. Yes, sir?
Just to be absolutely clear, the, what we're going to hear today is just about the three buildings, the three buildings on the site, the arena, the Expo Hall, and the theater. And there's no discussion today or no proposal with respect to the rest of the site.
No, and what they're going to, they're going to show, what is a vision for a template of some of the rest of the site, consistent with what those earlier visions that I showed you just a minute ago from 2008. So they've kind of just templated some stuff out there, although there's a parallel track of working, as you well know, a relocation of an office building on the corner of the site, as well as a parking structure to free up. Again, those two elements are consistent with all these previous decades' worth of plans that we've seen. So the city felt comfortable moving forward to try and look at that piece as a, as a start to that, to that overall project for the site. But what I would tell you is today's brief from Populous is strictly to look at these three buildings and what the redevelopment options could be, as well as the cost.
One thing, Mr. Colonel De La, this is a council committee meeting. We would not be accepting no comments or questions from the general public.
Correct. So with that, what I'd like to do is introduce Jim Swords. He was going to talk about, he was from Populous, and he's going to talk about the plan. So Jim?
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Everyone, it's great to be here in Mobile. I mean, it really shows how important this project is to everyone in the community by the turnout we see today in the middle of a thunderstorm. So it's really heartening to see. And we take this, our work, very seriously. But a little bit about who we are. First of all, Populous is the largest public assembly architecture firm in the world. We've got major offices in Kansas City, Brisbane, London, but also offices all over the country, San Francisco, Denver, Dallas, New York City, and Aaron and I are from the Boston office. We've been doing this work for nearly 40 years. Some of the projects you may have heard of that we have done is Yankee Stadium, the Atlanta Braves' new ballpark, the new build's football NFL stadium, any, you know, most major projects and then projects probably never heard of that are also important to us as well. The reason we were brought here is because we were, we just have completed the new legacy arena renovation in Birmingham, which is a 1970s-era building, along with Protective Stadium in Birmingham. And we've been working with a construction firm there, Beal Harbors, who did all the cost estimating and is doing the cost estimating on this project. They built the Birmingham project. We found out that there was interest in by Mobile to work out, to look at this project, and so we came down. Our charge, and we started in April, was to, first of all, we talked to different stakeholders in the community in Aaron's good, making his presentations, talking a little bit about what we found out, and then look at the potential for what can be done to this complex of buildings. This is a great civic asset, but the question has to be asked on a building that's nearly 50 years old, you know, what, what is its potential and what can you do with it, or if you, can you do anything? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Aaron Brogeroff, and he's going to show you what we think you can do with this. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the agenda, just going to go through, as we all mentioned, some of the design concepts for the, for the arena itself and the other buildings on the site. All of this is conceptual, so, you know, things can change. This is not meant to be a proposal for construction or anything like that. But it is a way of thinking about the buildings and what we think needs to happen to the buildings to make this a modern, contemporary facility for Mobile. So I'll just run through, first of all, setting the project objectives. Those were the first things we did as a working group team, looking again at site concepts and showing some of those things that have been floating around about other uses on the site, addressing the kind of parking analysis for a facility like this and what the, what the expectations would be and what the capacity is in downtown. And then diving into kind of details of the arena itself. How does this building become modern for the future? How does it work as a current contemporary arena for current use? It's different than 1964. And then some development strategies. We came up with two different strategies, which we've titled "The Shift" and "Embrace Strategies," which I'll review a little bit more detail as to how those might work out. And finally, the cost estimates at the end. So project objectives. Number one, and we talked with the mayor about this too, you know, fiscally responsible development. Make this a right-sized building for Mobile. What is needed for the city? You know, how big should it be? How many seats? Number two, attract shows and events that were not attracting today or that kind of turned to other venues because of other features. Do that in an economically responsible financial model. Update the facility to modern hospitality and technical standard. ADA, restrooms, access, all those things need to be addressed, as well as sustainable issues, environmental concerns, energy usage. Set in stage for that early. Calibrate the seating capacity to the programming. So if needed, reduce, can the facility support the seating that we're going to be providing in it? And then also design in a way that invites a steady diet of programming with focus on events that draw in families. That's what we heard a lot about, family usage, family shows and events, amateur scores, those kinds of events happening here. So as we look, this is an overview of the building complexes and the theater, arena, and Expo Hall as the main core elements that we looked at here. The other elements, as you hopefully can see there, are kind of the interstitial spaces that connect all these buildings and support them. And overall, it's about 400,000-plus square feet of space. So as Jim mentioned, we met with a bunch of stakeholder groups. We met with a number of Mardi Gras societies, ASM Global, the operators here, Downtown Restaurant Tours, Civic Center Board, Church Street Neighborhood Group, and Mayor Simpson and Advisory Panel. The question we asked each of those groups was, what do you love about the building? What is great about the building? And then what do you feel needs to change? And so going through just kind of the best bits here as an overview, you know, the location is great. It's close to downtown. It's convenient to the businesses there, restaurants, entertainment, other things. It acts as a home for Mardi Gras. There's a lot of, you know, admiration of the building for that use. There's nostalgia for what happens here, maybe more than what the building is itself. The site and building usage, keeping it active, keeping things happening here. Landmark status of the dome was something, you know, people like seeing the dome in the city. The fact that it is a landmark, it's been here for a while. Again, complementary with downtown, the feeling that it's a community building, we've heard this a lot, it feels like it's part of the community, it's truly a civic center, you know, feels like people have an ownership of this building. And then again, family-oriented events and usage and that kind of program is desirable. Things to change. Overall appearance, curb appeal, you know, how the building looks from the street. Building system upgrades. There's three or four different electrical systems here we've heard. Improved connectivity to downtown, maybe across Spanish Plaza, across Government Street. How do you make those connections through the city? Improved concessions and hospitality spaces, including the rooms that are used for Mardi Gras function around the lower bowl. Brighten and lighten. It's kind of a dark appearance on the inside. Circulation, doorways are tight and constrained, congested. Improve those. Add lighting on the dome, potentially make it more of a significant landmark in the city. Have more green space around the building. So give it some breathing room against the neighborhood. Improve sustainability and a new parking solution, obviously, to replace the surface parking lot that's out there. So looking at site concepts, this is the aerial view of the site as it exists today. So you can see the parking there. You see the three different buildings, Expo Hall, arena, and theater. This is looking towards the downtown now. And on the right-hand side of this image, you see the existing street infrastructure, which you're probably familiar, but there is a proposal for the I-10 interchange to be changing how that works today. So Clayborne Street gets kind of disrupted in that way because there's a new off-ramp coming down. And there's a new elevated roadway that passes north to south there, and a divertment diamond that happens at the bottom there to change the traffic flow. So one of the examples we looked at for what that could possibly be along that edge, and this is just, you know, inspirational kind of images, but in Birmingham, they've created this linear park underneath their overpass there. It's really well-lit. It's got a lot of programming. There's, you know, bungee cords, tents, table tennis, ping pong tables, all those kinds of things. Could be kind of a nice linear park feature to have on the edge of the site and also create connections to the other green spaces in the city. So this is just a, you know, for orientation purposes, basically, the existing Civic Center is here. Proposal for a new parking deck that happens along Clayborne Edge, and the new Army Corps of Engineers building happening in the southern corner of the site. Army Corps may have an entrance here off of Canal Street into the site. We're working with a traffic engineer currently to do a study. It's not quite complete yet, but to understand the way that events would work here during arena usage and how this new street infrastructure would function from a traffic standpoint. One of the things we know is that there should be a lot of egress out of the parking garage after an event. So we're trying to create as many connections out of there. You can see a couple of entrances and exits around that architecture. So these are where we kind of learned after a number of iterations of how to approach the design, and took two different approaches here, as I mentioned, "Shift" and "Embrace." One keeps the theater, "The Shift," to the east, we call it that, because it kind of shifts the programming of the arena and of the sports spaces to the east and shares, a shared connection with the theater. It includes renovating the theater. This kind of is a little bit of a focus on performing arts, creating two significant spaces in the city that can support performing arts. Freeze up the Lawrence Street side for, with the demo of the Expo Hall, for future development, possibly residential, which you can show some images of that as well. And then the idea here conceptually is to create an internal connection or internal lobby space here through the, through the arena buildings as a, as a street or continuation of Spanish Plaza. And the "Embrace the Dome" scheme is more about clearing the site. It opens up the possibility of some development on the eastern side. It reinforces the kind of landmark status of the dome. So this is taking it from what it is rather than building around this circular structure. And we create a new donut of space of programming to support that main bowl in the middle. So the idea is that there would be some spaces supporting the arena that would also be facing outward towards the city and create some new green space around that, that main construction. You can kind of see in the sketches down here, it's just ideas about connectivity and creating those connections and linkages that could happen in the future to, you know, eventually Water Street or towards a, to the river. This is the, this is the "Shift" concept. It's kind of, so be after construction of the first phase, maybe, with potential development parcels here outlined that could have future development. And that might look something, you know, like this, where you would have future residential along Lawrence Street. We think that's compatible with the neighborhood that's there. Could be apartments or multifamily or townhouse-type construction. Parking and other things might be served by kind of backyard shared spaces in between those buildings. Some potential retail, commercial space in the center of the site. A possibility for a hotel, which would be attractive to support events going on at the arena and theater. And then again, the two proposed parking deck and army car building. This is a version of the "Embrace," pre-full build-out. And the idea here is that there might be kind of a circular drive or a drivable, walkable path, more puppet green space and certainly in the building. This could be used for keeling up parades, floats, all the things there around. The back of the building here, by the way, in both instances, is a loading dock area. So this would be kind of the loading area. And there are a couple of new streets that connect, extending to Slava and also off of Canal, which those are consistent in both of those groups. This is the idea of that "Embrace" scheme, kind of fully built out, with a residential focus mostly on the southern end of the site, and this becomes more of a green space facing the neighborhood. These could be activated too. There could be, you know, viewing platforms or places for pavilions or other things that happen within that space. So just looking at the parking, at the Civic Center site, there are 1,250 parking spaces currently, surface parking. So when those go away, we kind of looked as to where the other parking is. As you can see from this diagram, there's not much to the south or to the west. These are all, these are kind of real small park, parking spaces. There is some parking in the downtown area. You have within a 10-minute walk, close to 1,000 spaces, and a 15-minute walk, another 1,200 spaces. From an event standpoint, a 20-minute walk is asking quite a bit for someone to park 20 minutes away and walk to the arena. So we think this definitely supports the idea of a parking deck here that could be shared use for the Army Corps building, for the cruise terminal overflow, and as well for the arena.
And before you leave, one thing that we see in other cities similar to Mobile is that parking resources within a downtown area are usually office buildings, things like that, you know, surface parking that are used during the day. Then at night, say after 7 o'clock at night, they're empty. But that's when events have happened in the arena. So we always encourage our, our client cities to encourage parking out in the area. Number one, it sort of meters itself. It lets, it lets parking come in, doesn't overload the streets with lots of cars, as a big parking garage sometimes can. It also provides the local businesses, restaurants, and entertainment facilities, it provides them with a place to, you know, to activate during the event. We see that in other cities. Birmingham, we have it still in Indiana. Lots of cities like that really like that. And especially after the event, a big parking lot jams up, but if you have lots of parking spread out through the city within a 10-minute walk or so, especially in this climate, then it sort of self-meters and doesn't congest the city streets either. So that's, that's a good strategy.
Is that for an event?
Exactly.
So, I mean, currently, what, the facility holds, what, 10,000 seats? I mean, but we're only talking about 1,250 parking spaces, and at the most, we might have three people per car. So we're looking at less than 3,000 people that can actually access the center from the spaces that we're talking about. Surface parking throughout downtown is still not going to accommodate that type of parking if we have a sellout event at the arena. So it seems like, you know, the numbers aren't quite adding up right here, because, I mean, I'm downtown all the time. And if we haven't been on a Friday night, and say we haven't been at the same, at the same time there's one here, then that eliminates the surface, additional surface parking that you're talking about, and that's from the parking lot on Government Street all the way through Dolphin Street. And then you're talking about a 15-minute walk from St. Michael's Street back over here. So it seems like we'll sort of park.
Yeah, the, what we have, what we have seen in the past in those similar cities is the market fills the need. So you don't have to build all the parking around the arena, sort of like around the Civic Center like it is now. It will, people will, like restaurants will have specials where if you come and park with, have dinner, you can park for free and things like that. Other, other places will fill the need. So we generally, and parking always becomes sort of an emotional issue, it's really amazing, but we always kind of discourage sort of a Walmartization of a downtown or around the Civic Center because, and encourage, encourage, the reason you encourage the parking to be spread out within the downtown or within the urban area to help become that economic engine in the downtown area.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just looking at the practicality of it. I mean, we're looking at a Mardi Gras-style event if we have a major event here. Most of the parking is going to spill over into Church Street East.
And we'll have to do some more. I mean, we're just scratching the surface here. Part of the parking study, if we go forward with this, would be actually to catalog, find out exactly the number of parking spaces we have and see if there is, if there is a need, and then recommend how you would supplement that.
One thing I can say is, you know, again, the 1,000-space parking deck is currently programmed. It could be 1,200, which means you're basically one-for-one for what's on the ground today. So there's no change. I mean, today there's 1,250 on site. So even if you had three per, you're still not to the 10,000. The reality is, is the parking decks around, we've seen with the parking analysis, that many of those are not reaching capacity even during main events. You can come down when there's multiple events and see top decks of parking garages still empty. So we need to do more analysis as a city, but I would tell you that based on their experience and based on other parking analysis we've seen, that we think that building more than that in a parking deck would probably not be the best use of funds.
Wait, you know, that's, that's impossible, but, I mean, Mobile hasn't seen a capacity event since Michael Jackson, what was that, 1978? So, I mean, if we're designing for a capacity event, then we need to take into consideration every aspect of what we would have with a capacity event. I, I think our whole purpose here is to maximize the use of the facility and not come in here at a moderate range on what we're doing in our programming. If we're going to program it, let's do it for the, the big thing.
Question two, you're talking about parking when you were saying the marketplace would, I guess, get it all settled out or whatever. Were you talking about private groups coming in and building other garages around? Or what? I mean, I understand the Walmartization. You don't want just massive fields of parking, but is that what you're alluding to, that somebody else might come in and build a parking garage somewhere close by that could handle if we have some massive event?
Not, not necessarily. I've got myself into this, so I'll be honest. So we'll see things like office towers having a, early, have a special 6:00 p.m., you get in by 6:00 or 7:00 p.m., it's $5 parking, something like that. We'll see, we'll see the community parking resources all of a sudden start to be there where you never even knew there was one. I think a good example, I don't think somebody would build a, you know, 500-space parking garage just to support privately, just to support the Civic Center. We had this exact same conversation in Birmingham, especially with the new 45,000-seat football stadium and the existing arena. And, and it is working itself out.
With on-street parking and people jumping on the curbs and just not walking and going to a, just anywhere, I'm one of those people.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, this is just the beginning of the study. We are working with a traffic engineer to design a strategy for what happens for certain size events. But the idea is that it's not solely served by one parking garage on the site. So there's a dispersed arrangement for different parking in different areas and kind of distributing that.
So you guys are suggesting there'll be multiple parking garages on this lot?
No.
No, one parking garage, but the parking strategy would be utilizing some of the existing ones that you see on this map as well as that.
I guarantee you, if you're the guy on the top of the parking, the twelve hundred seat parking deck, at the end of the event, you come out, you've got a two hour wait before you can even get out of the parking garage.
We're dealing with that now.
So that's, that's the, you know, there's a process.
When you say you're dealing with the traffic engineering, is that the city traffic engineering that you're dealing with? Or another entity?
It's another entity, a consultant that we have on our team.
Where are they located?
In Birmingham.
Are they consulting with our city traffic engineering?
Yes, they are. They're actually here today with them.
And you guys mentioned that the, the new on-ramp and off-ramp have been taken into consideration with the ingress and egress coming out of that ramp?
Yeah, I think the main thing that triggered us to look at that more closely was when we discovered that ramp will disrupt Clayborne from being one of the main north side taxis there. So we're, we're looking at how that impacts the rest of the traffic around the site.
Clayborne is currently the main entrance, you know, in and out of, of, I say the auditorium. I've, I've never changed it, but it's currently the, the main entrance in and out. And, and I, I guess my next question would have been is, has there been any collaboration between you guys and the engineers for the actual bridge itself to make sure that there is a synergy there to make sure that all this works in unison together?
Yes.
You know, make sure that our, you know, our.
I share with them the cop, the preliminary designs from Aldott. And so that's why they've programmed that in there. And by the way, in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight, it shows the same off-ramp coming off of the interstate in Clayborne. So we've known for a long time that that's gonna change. So it's just a matter of, that's why the traffic engineering or traffic engineering, we've got to do an analysis of all things to include those future plans.
And, and one more question about traffic. What about community disruption for, and I heard, hadn't heard you guys talk about the Downey Bay community, which is on the south side of Canal Street? You know, what about community disruption there? Because if you remember, in the concept going to the bridge, you're coming down into Clayborne going south into Downey Bay. That whole area changes, which slows down the traffic flow going back to ten and into the community, both coming and going. So what have you thought about so far that handles the community traffic trying to get back and forth home when there's an event at the theater, I mean, an event at the auditorium? Cause your Lawrence Street side, from what I can see over there, has no ingress and egress. And I'm guessing you're doing that to protect Church Street East.
So now what we're trying to do is we saw all these changes that are coming about. We knew that there's gonna be, you know, this was, you know, if we're gonna build this and, and have large events, the traffic was gonna be an issue. Those are beyond our expertise as architects. And so we told the city that we needed to get a traffic specialist to help us. And that, they are not complete with their work yet. So we're still in that, you know, they're still working to help us understand all the issues around traffic and around the site.
And we, and so, and I don't wanna get hung up apart because there's a lot to.
Well, I mean, I'm.
About fifty more slides, so we gotta.
I was gonna say, Mr. President, but then get from the presentation before we start shooting holes.
Not shooting holes, who's asking?
All right, so go ahead, Aaron. We'll go down, we'll get.
So we'll dive into the arena itself, or auditorium.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, our first step to understand the building itself, the buildings, all three of them, and how they work together is to look at where the program is placed currently. So we did an assessment, this is all existing floor plans of the arena. Looking at the theater, where locker rooms, dressing rooms are located currently, how those service spaces, catering concessions, what kind of numbers are you getting? How, how's that served during an event? Right now, there's a, a lot of portable catering brought up during events. So obviously we wanna correct that. Public restrooms, just from a code basis, what do, what do we need to provide for public restrooms for code? And where are they located? Support facilities and operations, loading docks, storage spaces, mechanical spaces, where are those located? Administrative spaces. The hospitality rooms, which is kind of really a unique thing. And I find a really interesting part of this site and this Civic Center is the Mardi Gras usage and how those spaces are used and how they're connected to the, the, the event floor. It's not typical of arena to have that, although you will have some. We have examples of other spaces that work similarly, but that's kind of a unique thing that, that we found. Lobbies and exhibit spaces, how much is there? How much do you need? And then control rooms. So we, we looked at all these different areas of the building to get a sense of, of what we can do. Focusing in on kind of spectator experience and how that is. The circular geometry presents some opportunities and some drawbacks, especially if you think about different uses. You probably attended an event there, probably felt like you were very far away from that event. So part of that is the geometry of the circle is, is, just is what it is. It's very rigid as a design, the original design. But we looked at different ways to optimize that. And one of the primary uses here that we found is definitely concert uses. But we wanna sort of optimize it for that, but also make it flexible for all of the uses. Another thing, just to talk about spectator experience, adaptable seating capacity. Making sure we can change how big the. So you don't feel like you're in a ten thousand seat arena, when you should be in a three thousand seat. Creating connected hospitality rooms. So currently those rooms exist on the lower concourse. They have no connection, they have no windows to the concourse or to the event floor. Increasing access to concessions and restrooms, so that you are not waiting in line at the closest restroom for forty-five minutes while you miss the show. And improving loading and storage. Again, looking at a current use concert, which would have the risers on either side. About eight, eight thousand seats here, the back of stage should be closed off. We're suggesting that it could be a different arrangement with the kind of asymmetrical riser geometry at the lower floor. So you get more seating towards the, away from the stage there on, on the side here that has optimal viewing positions. Putting in these retractable risers would allow you to bring on seating when needed and put them away when not needed. They could be connected to the upper bowl with some stair platforms and appropriate design of how those risers work. Currently, the risers are not connected. There's quite a big gap, which I think has caused some instances, incidents in the arena. But the, the idea is that those could be connected. Looking at the meeting rooms, these are some examples of how they're used on the left here and their current state. These are from another project of ours, James Madison University, creating what are hospitality rooms that have blazing, that have views into the arena. You can kind of see the seating bowl behind here in this image. Have other amenities like small kitchenettes or vending or other things that are in there. They could be repurposed for different uses, meetings, etc., really for community use, making them available. So one way to create that, that we thought of is actually carve out some of the bowl space, the, the concrete seating here on both sides. And doing that in a way that we can insert new spaces into there that are kind of like club rooms that can be connected, that could have dividers between them, but they would have direct views out onto the, the event floor. So this would be a wall here, vision glass, or it could be even open, that is directly connected and gives you sightlines down to the, to whatever show or band, the Mardi Gras ball or your. Above that, we would create new seating. If we just created those rooms, none of the people on the upper bowl would be able to see over the top of them. So we'd have to overbuild some new seating on top of those rooms. And it does a couple of things, creates that scene to start, but also brings those people closer to the actual event. So you're, you're gaining, you know, twelve feet or so, getting closer to, to what you're seeing and having a good sightline to it. It also provides an opportunity to create some premium, kind of upper level or kind of premium, same only deck space that can be connected to those upper level seats. It's a really unique advantage point to be that high and looking down on, on something going on on the floor. So it's an opportunity to create some new space.
Could you go back to slide please?
Sure.
Then are these, these numbers that we've got, I'm trying to read them here. What's that layout on, on seats?
So. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
I can't see what this is saying on here.
Oh, okay. Seventy-two hundred seats for concerts, eighty-five hundred seats for basketball courts, sixty-two hundred seats for space.
So that's the capacity for those events, and that's what's.
Correct. Yeah, the concert is less because you would, you would not have people seeing behind the stage.
Question, but isn't, isn't one of our problems, and this will be a question for the, the director of the facility, but isn't one of our problems currently is our lack of total number of seats withdraw from major events? That's why we're not, is that not one of our issues?
That's not an issue here.
That's not an issue? So our ten thousand seat capacity is the average concert size?
It's actually less than that.
Less than that? I mean, we've just seen some concerts at lab and at the campground, not campground, at the. Grounds that were considerably more than that, looking at fifteen thousand better. So, I mean, if, does that, I, I'm just asking, does that hinder us? Do we need more seats inside?
The trend in the industry in everything, NFL stadiums, major league arenas, is, is, is higher quality, less capacity. And not try to build for Easter Sunday for the, for the great, you know, the biggest event you could ever think of. And then let's build for that. But what we try to do, we've been doing all over the country, all over the world, is right sizing for the market. So that's, we think these are right sized, even a little big for the market. And, and that's based on ASN and their experience.
We heard sixty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred was right size.
And that's a major concert?
Well, that's not helping John or, but you're not gonna get that anyway. And so we're gonna, I mean, to be, I mean, to be realistic, you have to be realistic. But you're gonna still get what we, what you, you still are gonna get good quality. And you may get, I mean, you play everywhere, so maybe, maybe we cut here. But I, I don't think we're trying to build for the biggest event you could ever think of. We're trying to build for what's right for the community.
It was the, from the very beginning, it was the steady diet of things that are achievable, not the two a year events, because that doesn't generate revenue for the city. You wanna have a steady diet of events that are manageable. And not only is it another entertainment bookers will tell you that number that they're talking about, seventy-five hundred, some you wanna maybe three thousand and be able to close it off partitioned. So that's, adding the flexibility is important. And a huge mega concert that you have probably wouldn't be hosted here, it'd be hosted somewhere else.
I mean, an old school concert like Voice of Men would draw more than ten thousand people to the city if I'm being. Just saying.
I, I think it's different events for different spaces too. And, and maybe there's more nights for an event like that would be really popular.
Yeah. I like that example of Birmingham, Carlsberg, like three nights at the stadium up there.
Yeah.
So these are, these are just some examples of how those different setups would work. This is a, a smaller concert, so five thousand seats or so. And, you know, with the stage brought forward in the space and having curtains, you can off the existing structure to close down and make it feel more intimate. Some diagrams of what we heard as, as different uses. Again, the concerts, Mardi Gras balls, or the whole floor might be open, those retractors, retractables are put away. Maybe there's tables and seating up there. The basketball or sporting, amateur sports happening on, on the lower floor. And then just an open bowl for, you know, rodeo, monster truck show, other things that might come. So making sure that what we do makes it a space that is flexible and usable for a lot of different events. So in looking at all these spaces that support the arena, we have to find new ways to, to address those and accommodate them. And that's includes a lot of, I mentioned the concessions. This just gives you an example of what is not filled or just black and white drawing is what is currently available today. And then the colored in graphics are what is needed or either by code or what we recommend. So from concession standpoints, points of sale is how we count it. There's currently eighteen hard points of sale and there's twenty-four portables that are brought in for events. We recommend that number be sixty-four hard points of sale, so that they're, they're all built in. And so we took, you know, the square footage required for that and put it into our program. Restrooms, quite a dramatic deficiency here. Thirty-eight women's restrooms. There's a need for a hundred and twenty-eight for a full capacity. Men's a little better off here, but sixty-two and you need sixty-eight. So, and along with all that, there's a need for family restrooms, other types of restrooms that accommodate people of different abilities and improve accessibility throughout. So some concepts of how to do that, you know, we, we mentioned relocating those lower rooms and lower bowl. Those could become different concession spaces. It can also become more booming and support spaces for restrooms. They're right on the concourse, they're easily accessible to a large number of seats. On the upper bowl, we would convert some of the storage and other spaces around the bowl to concessions. And there's still a need to find space for, for more restrooms and concession areas. So we have to go and think outside the bowl. What I'm showing right now is the exterior wall of the auditorium is the brick side you see on the outside that's curved. Everything else is, is gone. And so what we're looking at is a concept of building outside of that to accommodate some needs. And again, the, the premium levels at the upper areas, those would also need some restroom support and concessions. So just going back to the two approaches that we came up with. This will kind of show you a four by four overview of those spaces. And again, this is conceptual, so not everything is worked out, but they're, the main things are kind of considered here. So where spaces could be, how they're connected. So this is the shift. As I mentioned, there's a kind of connected space between the theater building, which is here, and the arena itself. That could be a lobby space, could have some concession areas or some food out there in that lobby. Some additional support spaces for the theater that would be needed. And maybe possibly office spaces. Back house and loading there is on the south side, the south facing side of the, the auditorium. And then on the north side, we thought, you know, facing Spanish Plaza could be a nice way to have those hospitality rooms right on the street, but also still connected to the floor of the auditorium. These could be subdivisible, could also be something. I know there's often use of the expo hall with the, with the auditorium during Mardi Gras events, for instance. So this is a, a large space that can be connected. It's about a thousand, eleven thousand square feet there that could be used during those times. This is the upper concourse, so you see the kind of hospitality rooms that are on the outside of the seating bowl. Concourse is connected via a bridge, so it provides some more access to the theater itself. Could be a second level here with some lobby spaces looking out over the, the lobby. There's, one of the things about the theater we discovered too is the current kind of lobby area is, is too small for a pre-function space really. It's not, it's not big enough to have people spill out either during intermissions or before events. So this inner space between the two buildings would serve that function as well. These are just showing some additional escalators. Everybody may be aware, there's only one escalator in the building currently. And elevators, there's no elevator for the theater. We're suggesting there'd be four elevators provided for this facility and four escalators. And then the other spaces around here would fill those needs of concessions and restroom admin spaces. It's just an overview with the roof off. I should mention this hotel connection here, we heard it could be very attractive for a program element to be on the site and be connected, but that's not part of our policy. So the, the theater itself, as part of the shift option, does require pretty significant intervention for rehabilitation of that building. There's water intrusion issues, there's some exterior envelope restoration that needs to be done. Mechanical, electrical systems all need to be updated and some of them maybe are, are tied into the existing other infrastructure here. So it kind of needs to be independent or, or thought about a little bit differently, especially when everything changes. The rigging is outdated in the flyhouse, so some shows will come in. The rigging is outdated in the flyhouse, so some shows will come in here and they say, I'm not gonna touch that because it's, it's too old. Sound and lighting upgrades all need to be made as well. So these are all considerations, but you'll see when we get to cost, the difference between the two options. Just a couple shots of the exterior. So again, the embrace scheme was more focused on the auditorium, more focused on that one element on site. Putting everything together to, to support that. Again, with more green space around the exterior, kind of encircling that, potential for development on Clayborne here as well. What you see here, before I show just the, the exterior walls of the auditorium, what you see in blue here is all additional space added, so all space that is new construction that supports the auditorium. And the goal of these spaces is for them to be kind of outwardly facing. This would all be lobby here facing north, facing back towards downtown, with more back house spaces and loading dock here facing south and away from downtown. Again, showing increased circulation with elevators, escalators, and those things. Here you can see the hospitality rooms, there's an opportunity for, on this upper concourse level, for kind of a cross concourse connection between the new rooms that face into the bowl, but also an exterior facing my lobby or ballroom that might face out towards the city and be, you know, connected there across the concourse. And again, showing some of those, we're trying to keep the programming similar between the two, about how much space is provided for each element. And this is an idea about where mechanicals might go. We would want to conceal that in some way, so create this kind of penthouse space that would be, you know, concealed or screened from, from view from the outside. And this is just a breakdown of the different program areas, there's a very detailed summary and list of each space that's, that's required for, for each of these options, including the existing. But you can see the differences in square footages with the existing complex at four hundred thousand square feet. The embrace scheme at two hundred and eighty thousand, eighty-seven thousand square feet, and then shift at three hundred and sixty-two thousand square foot. And a breakdown of what would be new versus existing. Again, the main difference here between embrace and shift is the theater itself, which is a sixty-six, sixty-seven thousand square foot program element.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
Just give me another two minutes or thirty-seven.
Sure, take your time.
So one concept is with the theater, the other one is not. So the shift is with the theater, losing the expo hall. The embrace is losing the theater and keeping the expo hall.
And expo's gone.
And it's also.
Expo's gone as well. So this, I hope this isn't too confusing, but on the far left, they're broken down by program type. That's termed square footage, and then on the right, these are all by floor level.
By floor level?
So as Jim mentioned, we worked with Bill Harbor, and I mean, just completed the, the legacy arena up at Birmingham. They have great data on what constructions and costs are currently. And they took all the data we provided them, which was a lot of stuff you've seen and a lot of background information as well, including the types of finishes and other things that would be expected in each of the spaces. Came up with three detailed cost estimates, one for the embrace scheme, one for shift, and one for theater. The shifted theater combined for purposes of our, ourself, because they go together. But you can kind of see the differences here, these are summaries of each of the, the options. Embrace is a hundred million dollar project, three hundred and sixty-four dollars per square foot roughly. And the shift with the theater included is a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, three hundred and forty-seven dollars per square foot.
So these are the construction costs, these are what you would pay the contractor to do, and the next slide shows project cost.
These are the project costs, including site development, civil costs, soft costs, design costs, those types of things. I've got the heat included in there.
What's the duration of project? What's the dur-?
Direction.
That hasn't been, it hasn't been calculated, we, once we have a full design, but I would just, I look at Mike and say generally it's something like this is a two-year project.
Yeah, it's about two, two years, thirty months, but.
Is there any type of escalation contingency possible?
Yes.
What Bill Harbor did, let me address that, what Bill Harbor did, that was a, a project that we managed in our former firm. It bid publicly in the fall of nineteen, and was completed just last year, closing, yeah, November. And so they took those costs, escalated them forward based on actual, when we question two-to-days' dollars. So as of July, two thousand and twenty-two, and then they projected them forward at three percent for the year to January of twenty twenty-four, due date. So allowing, I looked at two-to-days, about eighteen months to get to a due date.
So what is the group's escalation for the time?
For the year, we took from now.
Until twenty twenty-four. What's the contingency?
There's, they have.
It's on that, yeah.
Yeah, they have five percent.
Five percent contingency.
But then the overall program budget for the next round, we might add, on the renovation, this is another ten percent could be over controlled just to deal with unknowns. There is this form of estimating and design contingency, the R G U, of all the contingency.
Let me add one more question, the, the total estimated cost is out of GMP? Or is that just, are, are we just set on, we're still in the estimating phase?
It's just a concept of what we're costing.
We're still a concept?
Yeah. Projected as if it would be, which it would be, a publicly bid job, and all the appropriate insurance, law, and to everything that the city would require.
How far are y'all into the design?
We're not, this is it.
This is just conceptual, right?
I have a question, I know this is way early, but if we went with something like the shift, are you thinking that all of this would be under construction at one time? Would it be theater first, then the arena, or?
We haven't really discussed that yet, that's the truth. Sometimes we recommend that you just rip the bandaid off and go.
Shut it all down?
And we did that, we, we did that in Birmingham, we shut it down for a year, and then COVID hit, so it was kind of a happy coincidence. Oh, well, if that could be happened, but it was, yeah, sorry. It was, they would have been shut down anyway, so why they were, they were shut down for a year, and, and that's when they did the renovation. And saved, it saved tremendous amount of cost in mobilization or re-mobilization. If a different contractor comes in, they want to do it all at one time, they don't want to stop and wait and restart again, and there's all kinds of problems associated with that.
Is David Clark here by chance? David Clark?
Silas Director of.
Does that include the theater renovation?
Yes, it does. It includes one sixty-eight, includes the arena renovation, theater renovation, and all of the.
Everything.
Shift space together, which is, and then soft costs, the F P D for the inside.
So the theater represents roughly a thirty million dollar additional cost of renovation.
To be clear, the, the hypothetical hotels, that's not included in this process, that's private development. And this does include the site work from basically that new back road towards Civic Center Drive, so it's kind of the site work there. So anything happening on the back end of the Civic Center site that we showed in the notional drawings is separate cost, separate private investment or city investment.
So the city, well, the city's expenditures are, are, we're, we're on the hook for every expenditure out there. So what you're saying is, is that the road would be a separate project from the redevelopment of Civic Center?
Which would be a separate.
The road itself, the sidewalk.
Uh, the, the site work would, that would be all done at the same time, and the cost estimate includes that site work to that, to that whole roadway, that's correct.
So as he said, the site work's not included? So the site work is.
Yeah, site, civil, and soft costs are additional.
I'm listening, I just want to make sure that you.
But I just said halfway, it does not the entire Civic Center site, it's only to that.
Right, it's not, not the portion at the core.
And the parking deck and all private.
Same work with those projects.
Right, they'll be total separate projects, each one will be separate.
Down to including that East West Connector Road that doesn't exist today.
Let me ask you, since you guys are sort of concept, how much do you think this cost will increase as, as you go through design? How much do you think it'll increase or it'll decrease based on market history?
So Mike pointed out that, that the estimation for the cost had a January of twenty-four date. So we, we anticipate the escalation of that over the next two year, you know, year and a half, two years. During design and all that is a comp, is a comp, a figure here.
Well, he said escalation is built in, but I'm saying as we go through concept, as the, the sixty-five percent CD, how much of variance we can get? I can see us, we're gonna pick up, like, because some of these dollars, I think, are somewhat conservative right now, based on what we're looking at to get to some of them.
So the estimate, like we said, is based on the legacy arena brought forth inflated, if you will.
Right.
But then there is a five percent design and estimated contingency built into Harper and Populous's numbers. It's pure contingency for the issues you're talking about and stuff. And then on top of all that, some cost is another ten percent of the overall project that is the owners to decide what to do with or how spend or not spend.
So the way to think about that is, what we would, our charge would be to do would be to work within these budgets and make the design meet the budget, not the other way around.
Design reverse.
And with a project of this type, adapted for use, it's good to be somewhat conservative at this point, because there are things unknowns that you might want to make.
So y'all asking us to approve the, the budget? Are you.
Populous here to present the concepts, let the city council absorb these, and then I think there will be a continued discussion. I think we look forward to talking to the stakeholder groups again about these, to get their feedback on the two concepts. And then I think there will be a public discussion about these two options, as well as the overall decision to invest this amount of money into these facilities. Again, there have been other proposals that recommend taking all of it down and doing a whole development that date back to two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and as recent as two thousand and nineteen. So it's, it's really a discussion we think we need to have over the next several months. But we want, we, we wanted, we charge Populous, and I think we do, we need to get an updated cost and concept from that forty million dollar estimate we had from two thousand and eight to now you see today, if you were to renovate these and make them, bring them up to today's standards, what it would cost, what the investment would be, and then we'll move forward.
With the shift, that's what the theater is for.
Yes.
So what is the seat, what's the seating capacity for, with the shift for the theater?
The theater does not change capacity, it's still nineteen hundred and fifty seats.
Now, I know, you have, you have information on how many seats in the same theater?
About the same, nineteen, roughly nineteen hundred, they're very close. I think, I'm looking at Kendall, but I think it's, they're within.
Nineteen twenty-seven.
Nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen fifty, so they're within twenty-five seats of each other. Much bigger, so that this, the theater here has bigger stage, dressing rooms, all the things that you would need for productions that the singer does not have.
That's right. But we're just gonna maximize out there, it's still a prompt type of deal that we're doing.
Gina, if I could speak to your question too, just real quickly, as far as basing, given what needs to happen in that combined pre-function with lobby space, I don't think you could really open one or the other without that, and then it would be, it would add the cost to try and then do it partway and then renovate the others. I think, I think you rip the bandaid concept off, it's the most cost-effective, least painful way to go about it.
And if we did go with something like that, we'd have to plan ahead, because things are already planned to take place in, in both of these facilities, so it's just.
Shane, in your mind, what's our decision timeline?
So I think we have, I mean, look, we could, we could talk about this for fifteen, twenty years, you know, we could take another fifteen or twenty. My sense is the public's anxious to do something. We think that the efforts that's happening in parallel to the back corner of the site with a potential new office building and parking deck are a catalyst to the overall redevelopment of the site. I think those projects and the investment there will trigger other developers that then really are serious about putting in money to help do other things on the site. Hotels, retail, multi, you know, fam, mixed-use, you know, family housing, as well as this project. As you see the cost here, you know, there's, look at Joel, the finance committee, you know, there's not money sitting to just pay for this. So we have to figure out the funding strategy and how to do that. But I think the sooner we can make a decision as a, as a city, which way we want to go, one of these options or something like this, or hybrid, and/or an additional option of taking it all down and saying, we don't want to invest that, we'd rather just have someone come in and do the whole site. I think we need to move on a decision, it's, you know, sooner than later, but there's no hard timeline.
But, but before we move quickly on a decision, I think that the treaty outreach portion of this needs to be a, a little bit more intense than what our scheduling showing. The schedule that was presented to me shows just a short range of maybe up two or three weeks per month. But there are groups that are gonna be outside church streets and down the bay that are gonna want to have participation into this facility, this municipal facility, even though it just affects three neighborhoods or four neighborhoods directly, but the rest of the community is probably gonna want to have a little bit of input into this and actually be a part of a few of what's happening for the community. The other thing is, if possible, the council, I'd like to keep all three. If we have to lose, and when I take, I lose expo hall over the theater, because our theater is the largest, our, our theater is pretty large, and we have plays and things that we can bring here that we haven't been bringing here, paying advantage of the large that it shuts up, using the same all the time. That would be my give if I had to give up something. The other thing is, is that Gina asked, or Scott asked a really important question, is timeline? Because either we're gonna have a public-private investment deal here where we have a property developer building, lease and pay it, or we're gonna have to go to the market for a bond issue, so, I mean, it's a lot to think about here.
Well, then, you know, you get to pardon my point, Williams, you know, I've been talking since the beginning of this discussion months ago about that exact issue of public-private partnership, which I believe is, is the way we, we should be going. And I think that more drawings that are rendered like this will, will get us down that road to get the partnership going, so there's a vision in place of, of what we have versus just an idea. And this is a great start to that. You know, I think, from what I've heard at this point, is the constituents that I talked to want something that make us proud to be from this city. And, and when you drive under the tunnel, down I ten, and you look right, and you see the, the current Iran, it's a ward on a notice. I've said that before, and it is what it is. You know, we have an opportunity to change that, and I think this puts us on the, the start of that path. Again, I think Williams is right, I think the community development is key, getting their input. But I think timeliness is important as well, especially with the escalation in costs. And, you know, nobody could foresee COVID coming at the latest in New Year's. But I think that the time is right, you know, with the Corps of Engineers effort to, to get things moving, get this out, get the information out. And then let's, let's put a, a date on the calendar and make a decision, and either kill it, or let's do it.
Before we, any more, uh, it seems as if though we have two master plans for the site. We have U S C, and then we have Populous. So it seems like we need, well, correct me if I'm wrong, I saw you shake your head, but, I mean, the ARB has a, 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 a program. program that they have to review, matter of fact, tomorrow, that is the core, which is totally separate, and it's, it's running on a separate, parallel timeline than this is. But we, this is one site development, so I think that we need an overall master plan that includes everything that's gonna probably be on that site, you know, to whatever use. I don't think we need to be working off of two separate plans, everything has to fit together.
Right, and if you want to flip back to maybe that, I mean, and that's part of the reason we asked Populus to at least show an image that, that shows at least where those, where the templated site is for the core, in office building. And there's, in lots of proposals we've seen and had, there was always kind of a vision for an office building basically in that corner. So, and then a parking deck, all the plans that we've seen have some level of parking deck. You can't put a building on the site without putting a parking deck there somewhere. So at least those two elements, we feel comfortable that those can sit there, and whatever happens on the rest of the site still needs to be worked out. Most of them show similar to what you see here. They show some form of housing along Church Street, or to the, the Church Street East area, and they show some other mixed use, either retail or commercial somewhere on the site, and a hotel. So at least.
Just one second to that. God forbid we put a five-story, four-building apartment complexes next to Church Street East on Orange Street, when we have one, single-story, two-story houses with an apartment complex next to that, that, that's gonna create a firestorm in the community. That's why I'm saying we need a serious master plan where community concept's taken into place. You can't have two different types of zoning that split the street, you know, that, it just doesn't work that way. So I mean, I think that moving forward, the master plan needs to show everything that we're gonna do up here, but also we need to have, again, the community involvement and input to this, it's gonna be extremely important to get us down the road, and the quicker we do it, the better.
So Jim, basically right now, we're really looking at the three choices. That's, that's the main thing right now, which direction we want to go. And then, coming back, trying to figure out this infield around, you know, what it may be, what it might not be as specific as possible, and of course, getting some more community input. But I know we've talked for twenty years about, you know, what to do with this, and we haven't been a lot, but it's, we're kind of getting serious now, so it's, it's time for some more specifics with this total site plan. But, but I think that the council, as far as one, two, or three, which of these we're going to go with, we may already kind of be leaning one way or the other, but.
And, you know, A, you go ahead. There, there's two here, and I think when you say three, take it all down is your, what are you saying, the third one?
Yeah, you're right, either the shift or the embrace.
And then the third one, for these buildings.
Well, I was counting three of them, it's keep all.
Yeah, so you could.
There would be four if you take it all down.
That's right. Yeah, and that's looking at just this complex. The remainder of the site still is templated currently, and it's, but it's not officially laid out specifically. Partly because that's gonna rely on a lot of private development, which we can't necessarily, we can, you know.
I know, but we can control the zoning and everything else in the master plan, and that's gonna be important to communities.
Wednesday, there's a planning commission meeting to discuss that.
Thursday.
Excuse me, Thursday.
Yeah, I've made plans to be there, I've gotta sign up to speak to the agenda to my councilman down the other side.
Any remaining questions?
Can we get copies of this?
Yeah.
Can we put it in either a link form of PDF so we can get it out to the community in newsletter in the commercial spaces that we need to get out so that everybody can see this?
Sure. And, you know, A way, you know, one councilman Dave's idea we stepped out is, you know, if, you know, put it out so that, you know, A may be to get a survey of the community on A and B, that shift and the embrace, you know, what is the general sense of the community to, besides stakeholders, what's the general sense of it?
I would add all three, they may want to keep all three.
So we can, we can get that, get feedback.
If we even look at the cost, let it see one for all three buildings. Yeah, and that's for just the theater, right?
Yeah, there's no cost estimate to renovate the expo hall for the hall.
But we guess, I mean, we know the square footage, and both your concept, your estimates were at between three forty-seven and three sixty-two, so just head to square footage and measure it out, I mean, cost it out by the spark.
It would be higher than what the cost would be to renovate that place, because it's a big empty room.
Like I said, if I had to lose one, I'd lose expo hall, I don't think, I, Steve Stone called Steve Boston in the Georgia Jack, Georgia Jack was the last time I was gonna do it.
And there's one in council?
Just thanks for your time, I'm putting this together.
Appreciate it.
All right. Great job.
Want to steal a drink?
Second.